Mayor Panko? Chair Miller, if you'd like to start, we're live streaming.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the September 25th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Town of Smith Falls. I'm Counselor Jennifer Miller, and I'll be your chairperson this evening. We have regrets tonight from Counselor McKenna and Counselor Brennan. Now, I would ask that you please pause and reflect as I start our meeting with our land acknowledgement. On September 25th, 2023, we acknowledge that the sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been a site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anashnabe Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rideau Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. So, we'll call the meeting to order at 5:02 PM. I have a recommended motion that the September 25th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda be approved as circulated, led by Counselor Robinson and seconded by Counselor McGuire, that the September 25th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda be approved as circulated. Do we have any disclosure of community interest or conflicts of interest or general nature thereof? Seeing none, could I have someone make the motion to approve our minutes? Counselor McGuire, seconded by Counselor Robinson, that the minutes of the September 11th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting be approved as circulated. There are no delegations. C E O Morris, do we have any director's reports?
We do indeed, Madam Chair. We have three, and I would suggest we start with Ms. Crowder.
Thank you. Good evening. I have three quick updates for you today. Mostly, it's about the fun-filled weekend that's happening this weekend. That will start with the Bark in the Park event. So, the community is invited out this Saturday between 11:00 and 1:00 PM and bring their four-legged friends for the Bark in the Park event to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Gleason Dog Park. There'll be refreshments in addition to local pet services providers and retails on-site, some giveaways, and some cakes, so we invite everyone to come down. The Saturday is also our annual Truth and Reconciliation event that starts at 7:15. The community is invited to gather at Centennial Park for a sunset procession to Duck Island, led by indigenous community members who will share their stories and experiences. The event honors those affected by the victims and survivors of the residential school system and is part of our commitment to enhancing understanding and working towards reconciliation with our indigenous partners. Sunday, October 1st, at Heritage House, they'll celebrate autumn with the annual Fall Fest, where you can hop on a wagon ride, participate in a scavenger hunt, arts and crafts, and register for the community pumping carving contest, along with other fun things. There'll be festive treats, including cotton candy and homemade apple cider, and they'll all be available for purchase. It's a admission by donation, and children four and under are free.
Yes, next up, we have Director Costello with more fun things.
Just a quick update to let everybody know about the 2023 Local Government Week we have planned. We are going to have an off-site council meeting, the same as we did, I can't even remember the year now, 2016, when we had our off-site meeting at S F D C I. We're going to be doing that once again on Monday, October 16th. We're going to have a special committee of the whole, where we're hoping we can have some discussion and let the youth ask some questions about topics that interest them, and then we'll follow it by a formal council meeting. Tuesday, we're going to launch an essay-writing contest for, we might launch it before, for grades five to six, as government falls under their curriculum at that age group, and we're going to be launching that, and the topic is going to be what they love about Smith Falls and what they would do if they ran the town. So, what they would do different. So, we're going to launch that, and grade five and six students throughout town are welcome to submit an essay. You'll be the judges for the winners, and we'll invite them to come and read their essay if they so choose and gift them with a swag bag of Smith Falls merchandise. We're also going to look at hosting a job fair at S F D C I, which is going to highlight some municipal jobs that a lot of youths wouldn't be familiar with, and we're going to try to encapture all of our departments and maybe one of each position to come and speak to students and hopefully get some people interested in some careers in municipal government. And then, on Friday, October 20th, we're going to wrap up the week and just have a coffee with council and invite all residents of Smith Falls to come up to the council chamber, look at our new environment, have coffee, and ask council members any questions. So, that will wrap up Local Government Week for 2023, and I'll also have a proclamation for Mayor Panko for the October 2nd council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have three items to talk about. First is, we had an electricity disruption this morning at the Memorial Community Center. About 7:30, we've recognized it. Hydro One was there at 8 o'clock, and it seemed there was a power disruption for a period of time. So, the consequence of that disruption was the ice plant was inoperative for a period of time, and ice gets soft very quickly when it's not running, especially on a warm autumn day like today. So, it looks like it's been restored. We had to cancel activities for this evening. We didn't want to compromise the ice surface, so we fully expect to be back fully operational tomorrow. And in the meantime, we're working with Hydro One to troubleshoot the source of the problem. Secondly, just an update on the former water treatment plant. As we all know, we've been working on gathering information at this point, particularly from the insurance company and not only our insurance provider but our broker, to understand what the claim will look like. We've submitted it. We've asked a series of questions of our insurance provider, and we're awaiting a response. So, that is underway. Typical of a claim like this, the insurance company would reach out and quantify the extent of the claim. That's what they're doing now, and we have reason to believe we should get a response shortly. So, once we get that, we'll then bring that back. We're also looking at shoring up some of the estimates we had for the restoration of the building, so we can bring you a full package and put you in a position to make a decision in the future of that site. So, we would like to, we're hoping to have something for next week, but if not, certainly the week after that, we expect to have something. But clearly, we want to get the right information from the insurance provider to make sure you have the right information.
Thank you.
Okay. And thirdly, I have an announcement to make. Back in March, as council members will know, we made some changes to the organizational structure, and from that, there were a few loose ends. We've since tied those loose ends up, and I'm exceptionally happy to announce that our senior planner, Carl Greinke, will become our manager of Development Services starting on Monday, October 2nd. So, congratulations, Carl. Carl's been with the town for over five years now. Started with us in 2018, has done a remarkable job as our senior planner, and will do an equally remarkable job leading Development Services, which will include planning. It will include building services, housing policy, and a new area that we're all going to spend lots of time talking about, and that's climate change and climate adaptation. So, congratulations to Carl, and we look forward to letting his leadership flourish starting on Monday.
Thank you. Congratulations, Carl. We're really glad for you. Any questions or comments?
We do.
Okay, so, we have no Committee of the Whole consent reports, no in-camera session tonight, so we are going to start on our priority issues. 10.1 with our new manager of development, Carl Greinke.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, committee. I'm very pleased to bring forward a report this evening updating council on the background work that we've done on the official plan update. At this stage, we're getting close to being ready to issue a request for proposal to retain a consultant to carry forward this labor-intensive and technical work, and we seek council's direction as it relates to the scope of what we asked for in the request for proposal. This report seeks council's direction on a few key items. Firstly, we seek your feedback regarding our proposed consultation themes. Town staff have undertaken work in recent months, both through public consultation as well as internal consultation, to identify key themes and visions. So, we know that the town is going to grow. The land needs study has told us how much, and a technical exercise evaluating and scoring alternatives will help tell us where that growth is going to occur and where it should occur. But we are recommending that we workshop the question of how and what we want the town to look like in 25 years. So, earlier this summer, we undertook a high-level public consultation that revealed that, from the 34 responses we received, that the public broadly and happily embraced growth as it leads to a vibrant and prosperous community, but wanted to see that growth also paired with the need to ensure the quality of life services, livability, attractiveness, and sustainability are a part of that, and of course, that everyone has a place to live. Late August and the beginning of September, planning staff held one-on-one interviews with town department heads to see what each department wanted to see addressed through the updated OP. Every department has a role to play on this project, and the one-on-ones allowed a great degree of conversation. The public and department consultation revealed a lot of very helpful and insightful feedback, which we've crystallized into five separate themes that are expressed as goals in the staff report. While the Planning Act outlines a requirement for an open house and a public meeting, what we'll do in due course is, and we'll do that in due course, however, we're recommending that we go above and beyond and host a series of workshops based on each theme, which will be targeted to specific stakeholders and members of the public who have an interest in that theme, and that will allow us to really get into detail and explore those themes in depth with folks who have a stake in that, and that will give us lots to consider when it comes time to writing our growth and design-related policies. In no particular order, the themes we're proposing are downtown revitalization, which highlights the fact that continuing the work we've been doing and supporting the core as an economic and cultural destination. Both public and department consultation spoke to this. Housing is proposed as another theme, and the goal that is outlined is inclusivity, focusing on both supply, ensuring that we have the lands and policies to allow for development, but also the tools to ensure that development meets the needs of the people who need the homes, including affordability. The third proposed theme is sustainability, and here's an opportunity to align with the work that will be undertaken in the Climate Action Plan and the work that the Climate Protection Working Group is beginning, and how we can plan our community to be more resilient to extreme weather events. Design and livability emerged as a common theme in the public and department consultation, how development can be accompanied by both quality-of-life improvements that continue to make the town an enviable place to live, and this is where we can look at implementing the planning-related recommendations, for example, from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was approved by the last term of council. Finally, transportation and connections came up in order to ensure that people can get around with a variety of modes and can support the transportation planning process that our strategic plan has identified. Our expectation is that the chosen consultant would act as a facilitator to guide the conversation and to help us take this feedback into an updated official plan. At this time, council's direction is invited to confirm that council supports the identified themes or to take council's direction if you'd like us to go a different route or consider different themes. A second scope-related direction that we seek from council is to support the 25-year growth horizon. While the existing 2020 PPS expresses this as a maximum, the draft PPS, which is not yet in effect, suggests this as a minimum. We feel the work done by the land needs consultants on a 25-year growth horizon presents a reasonable and far-reaching planning horizon that allows us to reasonably plan for growth while still allowing us to pivot as needed in the coming years. The third scope-related direction we seek from council relates to supporting technical work. It is not unusual that for a project of this magnitude that we investigate incorporating other plans and studies as part of the scope, especially if we are looking to do this work anyway, and that helps us create a more complete and broad-reaching plan. The land needs study suggested that while we seem to have adequate commercially-zoned lands as a whole, it was not clear that this was a case across the entire commercial sector, nor that the existing supply met the specific needs of retailers or other folks who are looking to locate within the community. The Economic Development Department also identified that there's been considerable change and growth within our retail sector and the broader commercial sector since the market analysis was done at the beginning of COVID, and the department has observed that needs have changed. With growth within population, they suggest that a commercial sector analysis will assist projects they're looking to undertake as well as guide our land use decisions, particularly relating to some of our commercial and mixed-use designations. Further, council's strategic plan has identified the need to undertake a transportation master plan. A transportation master plan and official plan would exist in alignment with each other, with the official plan identifying growth needs and servicing considerations and a transportation master plan informing infrastructure needs and capital priorities. The current plan includes a transportation chapter as well as a schedule outlining a road classification system, identifying where our arterial and collector roads are, where proposed collector roads are, and then some OP policies that are associated with either of them that are then carried into zoning. Following the current OP transportation schedule also includes a fairly broad and probably out-of-date bike network, and then, especially now that we've undertaken an active transportation master plan, and that gives us the opportunity to update all of these and enshrine that in policy. At this stage, our view is that the official plan gives us an opportunity to collaborate on these projects rather than undertake them separately or independently. If we do decide to include these within the scope, we expect that the chosen consultants would propose subconsultants on the larger project team to assist with this work. The fourth area where we seek council's direction relates to opportunity areas. As councils are aware, the current official plan identifies two development reserves that have been identified for future development once the need arises. This report identifies these two locations, the Galapo Center frame lands and the east end of Lorrin Street, as well as other lands within our current settlement area boundary as opportunity sites, meaning large areas where we have the ability to undertake some meaningful area-specific planning to really plan for how we want them to become and how to do it. The two other larger areas of town that we identified are within our urban settlement area boundary but appear to be undeveloped and may warrant some attention from council either through this project or separately, and that is, of course, the area around Maisy and Cornelia Street and the vacant lands between Ferguson and Ferrera. The land needs study identifies the need for additional residential employment lands, and it is fair to say that through this process and the upcoming years, we'll be looking to decide where to do that. One way the town can take a lead role in developing a specific and implementable plan for a particular area of land is through a secondary plan that establishes specific OP policy and evaluates the land in more detail than would be done in a broader OP, looking, for example, at things like concept plans, detailed servicing studies, area-specific consultations, and potentially special planning or economic development tools to support the development of the lands or investigate ways in which we can assist on that. And again, this can be done as part of this process or separately. An opportunity area is not a defined planning act term, but rather what staff are identifying as sites that we may wish to have a closer look at, and council has discretion as to how you plan for these or if you wanted to look at different areas. As this is a new concept introduced for the first time, council would be reasonable in allowing for additional consideration, and as such, our objective at this particular point in time is to plant that seed for consideration, open the conversation up that we have the opportunity through this process, and we certainly welcome council's direction as to whether you would like to explore opportunity areas or potential secondary plans as part of the scope of this OP update or potentially as part of a future project. And certainly, we can get into a more granular and specific discussion on what those options may mean potentially in a future report based on the direction this evening. So, to summarize, staff will be seeking the services of a consultant team to undertake this work, and we're seeking council's direction as to what to look to include within that. Every municipality does its official plan its own way, and beyond the fairly basic statutory requirements, we have the ability to decide how we want to do it in a way that meets council's and the community's needs. Our objective as staff is to ensure that the project aligns with council's expectations. The report, of course, covers a fairly broad range of topics, which is normal given the many items that we'll be looking at through the official plan. So, at this stage, staff are seeking council's direction on the four key items, which will help define how we want to proceed on the plan and what we want to include. So, I'll pause there, and I'll welcome council's feedback on the staff recommendations as well as direction on how to proceed with opportunity areas. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Manager Greinke. Any questions?
Sure, I'll go first.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Carl, and we're really happy to see us come forward, and I mean, RFP doesn't seem that long ago, but we've changed a lot in that last, what, nine years since that was finalized. I support the five themes. I think that they are all very relevant and appropriate as we go forward. Also agree with incorporating the transportation master planning and the commercial sector analysis in the scope of the project. One piece I would like to suggest maybe we should be incorporating as well when it comes, especially on the housing front when we talk. Your comments on housing, doing what we must to ensure that enough housing is available to all who need it and that housing types meet the unique and changing needs of the community, supportive, inclusive, and affordable housing as needed. And the piece that I think goes along perfectly with that is the housing needs study, and that's set for Q3 2024 in our strategic plan, and I think maybe it does make sense that this be incorporated here. We almost see that information before we can complete this information. We need to understand the need before we can start determining what we should have. So, I think that would be one suggestion I would have. Aside from that, I think it's critically important that we do look forward, and with the PPS suggesting beyond 25 years, I think that's at least 25 years being relevant. So, overall, great analysis, and the only other concern, I guess, is a one- to-year timeframe, and I would really prefer this not drag over the next couple of years. I mean, by that point in time, we're working towards the final year of the mandate of this term of council, and I think there's a lot of things we would like to try to get started before that. So, I don't know if we can put within the RFP, we want a 12-month completion date or whatever is realistic. I understand it's a large piece of work, but I also think we need to move as quickly as possible through the process to get to where we need to be.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Carl, I'm wondering, how do natural heritage features get incorporated into this? When I look at the opportunity area too with Maisy and Cornelia, a lot of that includes wetland and low-lying areas. How does that layer kind of integrate with the rest of things here?
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. The official plan currently has a natural heritage area schedule, so the provincially significant wetlands are beyond the boundaries of Smith Falls. They're in Drummond, North Elmsey, and Montague Township. Typically associated with the PSW is a 120-meter influence area, and that is being reduced through wetland, adjusted wetland policies. So, through this exercise, we do work with the Rideau Valley Conservation Authority as an example, as a commenting body that we work with to verify that the mapping is up to date and correct. So, as we don't, the current official plan does not include a large variety of natural heritage features within the municipal boundaries. The largest area is the area around the Galapo Center. There are significant woodlands and various other features there, and certainly through development proposal, especially if we're looking at something in the frame lands, the environmental work associated with that and aligning with provincial and municipal objectives for natural heritage features would be part of the scope of that project. For the most part, the mapped areas that are identified as significant are either beyond the borders of the Town of Smith Falls. We do have a few around the Parsons Long-Term Care Home, and that was evaluated at the development stage through the planning process, but that mapping already existed. So, our expectation through this process, we would be verifying that the mapping is up to date and aligns with what the province has defined.
And is there an opportunity through this official plan process to say, okay, maybe it's not provincially significant, but with the way the safeguards are being diminished provincially, maybe we say, okay, this is municipally significant, and just make sure we're accounting for that in this process, or is that outside the scope of the plan?
Through you, Madam Chair, were you referring specifically to wetlands or through a different or more broadly, natural areas that we would like to protect?
I'd say all natural heritage features, but especially wetlands and those areas adjacent to the swale.
Yep, and that's a reasonable question, and certainly, if there is a forested area, if council would like to investigate that and propose and identify, get into a more granular detail in terms of the value of that, that's one option we have. Alternatively, we always have the option to designate your own lands for open space or establish some sort of other protection, but if there are natural heritage areas that council would like to identify in particular through this process, then we can certainly, the official plan update is the best time to do that, and I'll certainly welcome council's direction as a whole on how you'd like to investigate that.
And Counselor McGuire, do you support the recommendation, along with Mayor Panko's suggestion of adding the housing study in the one-year mandate, if possible?
Yeah, I definitely, I agree with both sides, but I also see the kind of contradictory, right? If we can get the information from the one in a timely fashion, the quicker we can get this done, the better. And just, yeah, to make sure we're keeping that, even though this is a land use exercise, I think it's really important that we keep that environmental lens on it, because we look at that land beside the swale as upstream of the water treatment plant, and just, you know, trying to keep that big picture going on it. That was the only part of it that I, for me, could use some extra.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. Carl, this is a big undertaking, but it's wonderful to see it here in front of us, because you know what? It gets all our minds open. It gets all of us thinking, and that's what you're doing, is you're going to give every one of us a chance to think about things as we go through this and where we can go and what we can do. And I do agree with Mayor Panko that we need a time limit. I'm just not sure. I think it's kind of tight, so you may have to have a little bit of wiggle room in there, you know, but at least we're moving forward. At least you're bringing all this to our attention, and we can come up with some great decisions with this, and I thank you for that.
So, what I'm hearing, Manager Greinke, is that council supports your recommendation. We'd like to see the housing study included, along with the ability to protect natural heritage where we can, and I think there's a sense of urgency on this work if you can make that happen too. No pressure, as the manager.
I appreciate council's feedback, and we can certainly build both the housing and the natural. We'll explore how we can incorporate the natural heritage into their. Madam Chair, with respect to opportunity areas, is that a look for council's direction, if that's something we want to explore now or potentially later? I think the, I guess, the broad comment I'll give in terms of timelines is, it does depend to some extent on the scope, but of course, all of these projects that were, and the main reason why we're proposing incorporating the transportation and the retail, as well as, of course, the housing into that, is they all tie in together. It's difficult to really meaningfully and correctly do one without thinking of the other, but certainly, the broader the scope is, the more the more the potential is this can be, this can be a lengthier process. So, I guess with that in mind, certainly, I welcome council's feedback as it relates to the opportunity areas and whether that's something you wish to look at now or potentially later.
Mayor Panko?
Thank you. My thoughts, Carl, if we're looking 25 years out, maybe plus 25, beyond 25, and if we're averaging 100 new homes a year, which would be less than we've been averaging in recent years, that's 2,500 homes, not to mention commercial, industrial, institutional. years, that's 2,500 homes, not to mention commercial, industrial, institutional development. So we'll probably need all this land. So I think if we have the big picture in mind, we should probably, I wouldn't want to pick a one over the other, but I think we should probably have a comprehensive look at all potential areas because by the time this, this plan, if this plan has a 25-year time horizon, we might as well look at where we will be. We may be looking at water adjustments sometime in that space of time as well, so.
Counselor Robinson?
With them all.
Thanks. Thanks, Carol. I agree, I agree with Mayor Panko. There's no real benefit, in my opinion, of leaving any one of those out to address two or three other ones. So if, you know, if it's not too much of a workload, investigate all four.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
Thanks. Yeah, I agree. I don't know, it's hard to look at these areas and say, okay, based on the growth numbers and based on the number of houses, how full will they get in the next 25 years? But I definitely agree with these four as a starting point and then potential extra areas for growth if required.
Great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, if I may, I would like to, probably earlier in the process, have a greater focus on Opportunity Area One, because that is largely town-owned land. I think we have an opportunity to dictate the development of that property, more so than what's privately held today. So I would like to move sort of that up in the pecking order in order to have discussions on what we collectively envision for the use of that property and future of that property.
Yes, thank you.
Timing might be key to this project and just prioritizing all the different pieces. So it's going to be a challenge, but I think we have the opportunity now to really look at our future and to seize on the growth opportunities that are in front of us. So thank you for taking this lead.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to tackling it. This is, this is a very important project, and it's going to really set the stage for the next generation of the town's growth. And I very much look forward to working with council on the next steps.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on with our priorities this evening, we have the Old Home Week Task Force report by Manager Crowder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the report before you is with regards to Old Home Week. There was a delegation by community members on July 24th requesting that council support the development and planning of the 20, or I guess 100th anniversary of Old Home Week in 2025. So council requested that staff bring that back and bring a report back with recommendations based on that delegation. So the recommendation before you is that council establish a municipal task force to support the planning and coordination of the 100th anniversary of Old Home Week event being held August 2nd to 9th in 2025. And that council adopt the draft terms of reference for the Old Home Week Event Task Force as presented. And that council direct staff to provide space at the community center once a month, coordinated by the Community Services Department, to accommodate the task force meetings. So Old Home Week has been a community tradition since 1925, when the first event took place. Every 25 years, the community rallies to plan and execute a major multi-day event during the second week of August. 2025 will commemorate the 100th year of this festival. The group of citizens had come forward to ask the council to establish a task force for the festival and have requested municipal sports and planning coordination of Old Home Week through establishing a municipal task force or committee to provide a structured entity under the town's umbrella, providing municipal resources, including staff support, guidance, and the use of town facilities and assets, direct and in-kind financial support to assist funding of the festival. The town of Smith Falls, Smith Falls has always played a key partner and supported the event through monetary and in-kind supports. However, the majority of funds for the events are obtained through sponsorship, community donations, and fundraising efforts. The spokesperson for the 2025 Planning Group is currently seeking 700 and, sorry, 7,500 initial startup funding, the establishment of the municipal committee structure, and the use of the memorial community center. A handout was provided to members of council on the July 4th delegation, which outlined project costs and spending allocations for the requested amount of $7,500, being initial municipal funds to assist in the event and marketing. Further breakdown of the costs will provide my staff, as requested, to better understand proposed spending, and I've included that in this report as well. Although staff support municipal investment for the event, there is no current funding allocated to support the request in this year's budget. Additionally, full-sum event budget should be developed and presented to council for their consideration as part of the 2024 municipal budget process to adequately allocate and manage requested resources. A task force is a temporary ad hoc committee formed to address a specific policy issue rather than an advisory committee that is formed to provide advice and feedback ongoing to administration and council. The group, if were to remain an independent community organization, could still apply for municipal grant funding and other supports and would have greater autonomy in planning and executing the event. They would be required to manage their own finances independently as well, as well as obtain valid, appropriate event and other insurances, the cost of which could be covered by their funding request. If they're under the municipal umbrella, then they'd be required to align and make sure that they're following all of the internal policies and procedures that any committee of council would have to. So I provide a council with a few different options for your consideration. The council established the municipal task force and adopt the terms of reference as outlined in this report. Council has not established a municipal task force, but requests the group submit a proposal for community grants during the 2024 budget season. And then again, that would come back in 2025, or council provide other alternative direction to staff.
Thank you, Manager Crowder. Members of council, we do have members of the group here tonight, and they're willing to answer questions or speak further once we've had a chance to discuss it. So do we have any questions for Manager Crowder? Could I ask a clarifying question then? The recommendation under the municipal task force, will they be covered under our insurance with that, just to be clear?
Yes, they would be. That's one of the advantages of being under the municipal task force.
Would we like to hear further from the group? Any opposition to that? Okay. Ms. Donnelly, do you want to speak any further?
Sure.
So that, just to be clear, this is not a delegation, but if you want to make any comments based on that report or have any questions, you're welcome to do so. If you could come to the mic to speak, though, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we appreciate the support as outlined in Julia's report. Of course, we're disappointed there are no monies to assist the group of volunteers for this town festival now. We understand, and we spoke to staff about the fact that we came in at a time when it was far into the budget. We didn't necessarily expect 7,500, but we didn't expect zero either. It was indicated we would be able to have our own accounts and manage the money we received from fundraising and sponsorship, and that's not reflected in the report either. We just hope there can be further discussion around these items. This is a unique festival that needs to be treated with unique event planning around it.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Yeah, I definitely, like, when I look at the financial ask, I don't think it's a huge sum in relation to other, other events that we sponsor or that we support. I wouldn't have an issue with, if we could try to find some funding in the existing budget based on, I don't know, just, you know, to find that amount of money isn't a huge amount. So if there was community grants or something that we could pull from to get some money together. I think the, sorry, when I look at the, I definitely, I like this idea of having it as a task force to get it under the umbrella of the town's insurance and that kind of thing. I don't want to be too specific with things like space at the community center, any municipal space that's open or available, great. And then, sorry, let's see, there, yeah, I just want to make sure we're giving the committee the, enough, enough ability to lead and to get this going because it's coming up quick, so.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn?
Yes. I, I support option one of council establish municipal task. I think that's really great. Then, then this group has the knowledge of our, our staff, and I think that's wonderful. And I think that we all need to be working together on this. We all need to know what the budget is so that we know how much money is going to be needed. I think that's the big thing, that we get that definitely established, and then we can see where we can go with it. So, but I think that we're working in the right direction, and I think working with them, positive, very positive.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I guess, I guess, and, oh, there's, is there reluctance within this group to be a task force as outlined? I guess is my question to, I guess to Krista. I see a lot of merit in the formation of a task force. I see the benefit of essentially leveraging municipal resources, I guess, transparency and accountability when it comes to finances, it would all be flowed through. We would have our staff engaged in helping to pay bills and look after all those elements of it. But it, I guess, as a task force of the town, it has to fall within our bylaws and our rules. And I guess it's, the question becomes, is that something that the group is comfortable with? And that's really what it comes down to. I think it's within, within the scope of the town, and that is the way we have to operate. The other, I guess, if it's something that, if the group isn't comfortable with, then I would see the town being here as a partner and then a funder, but it would leave the group to probably to form an offer profit or something in order to have the governing body in order to function possibly. But, so I guess it really comes down to, this is an offer, the way I regard it. And if the offer is accepted, then I think it's, it's full speed ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
I agree with Mayor Panko. You know, if, if, if you're willing to work with us as the town, then great. But, you know, as, as he said, it's whether or not you guys are willing to work under those terms. They have some benefits, and it may have some, some, some attractions, but depending on your point of view, but I agree.
Thank you. And I think I would just add that, you know, we, this is really an important event, and I think we all want to see this happen. And I think it's, it's an event that is outside of our typical community ask because it impacts the entire community. That being said, having worked on the other side of the table, there is a structure that comes with municipal dollars because we have to answer to the public for how we spend their dollars. And so I think it's important to understand that we have to work within those confines. So I would support certainly the recommendation should the task force or the existing group choose to, choose to work under that. I think the insurance is an advantage. I'm with Counselor McGuire. If we, if we have come under budget in any sort of way and we could go ahead with a little bit of money this fall, then I would support that. Otherwise, I know we would try to get it into our 2024 budget, which unfortunately is just around the corner. It's getting quite cool at night. We know what time of year that brings. So, yes, Counselor McGuire?
Thanks. I just had a question on the financial autonomy of going the task force route versus if there's an independent committee. Because an event like this, it's going to have revenues and there's going to be expenses, and then sometimes there's donations. Is there, how does that change if they, if, through the task force versus an independent committee?
Through you, Madam Chair. So a task force, all the finances would have to flow through the town and through our financial system. So any revenues that are collected, whether they're sponsorships or donations, it would have to come into our system and expenses would come out of our system. So it would be managed, you know, through a treasurer on their board and then as well through staff working with the finance department to make sure that any revenues are matching with the expenses, so everything's transparent and open and processed.
So would it be similar to the DBA where it's coming through and out of the town's accounts, but they've got autonomy over how it's spent and where it's spent? Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Panko.
Yeah, and to that effect, as we have the ability to issue charitable receipts, if they do have donations, not sponsorships, but donations to Old Home Week, we would have the autonomy to eventually issue charitable receipts for that.
Correct, yeah, based on our donations policy that we have.
Which may help.
Thank you.
And through you, Madam Chair, just with regards to funding that's currently available. So the community grants program is currently in place. That funding has been exhausted for this year, and under their current structure, they wouldn't qualify for those grants. So if there's any ask or funding that council wants to provide currently, it would have to come from an operational budget or a reserve.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire?
And I guess just, is there anything from the members of committee that are here on the paper that you'd like to see changed, or is, are you guys mostly in favor with how it's been presented tonight?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
We support all of that, all of what Julia has and staff have recommended. It was just some details around that, whether we could have some money this year to go out and promote, because if, when we, and we will present a full budget for 2024, but between now and receiving that, we have some work to do in terms of logo and, you know, finding, presenting ourselves professionally. But we, we want to be a task force of the town. That's not really been an issue for us. It's some of the logistics around that and just understanding them, learning what they were and how that rolls out. So yes, we are in full support of doing that.
Okay, no, that's great. If you guys are in support, I'm fully in support of the recommendation. And could we give staff direction to try to look, to find some money? I think the budget's really well laid out in the presentation.
Yes, Sienna Morris?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I believe Julia was able to identify 1,500 that could potentially be freed up without a budget amendment in 2023. So if, if that's sufficient, we could, and council approves the task force, once we set it up, we'll set up a set of accounts or books, fairly straightforward stuff, but we could transfer 1,500 as a starting point to get things rolling. So we wouldn't have to dig too deeply. 7,500 would be a different level of digging.
I'm seeing many nods. Thanks for your work on this. I think what I'm hearing around the horseshoe is this is really important to all of us, and I understand what it's like to try and get an event off the ground, and those expenses will pile up quickly. So I'm hoping this group will accept our, our offer and join us and work with us in partnership. And hopefully, that 1,500 gets you a little bit of money before we can have a bigger budget discussion, and we look forward to your full budget outline. So thank you very much. And moving on to our last priority issue, the Heritage House Museum Strategic Plan, again with Manager Crowder, thank you.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And I've had Sienna Colley from the Heritage House join me for this one, if there's any questions later on that she can better answer. As you know, Lisa went on maternity leave earlier this year, and Sienna was stepped up to take her place and has been doing a great job. So the report before you is with regards to the Heritage House Museum Strategic Plan 2023 to 2027. The purpose of the report is to provide council with an update on operations as noted in the strategic plan and to request the adoption or the endorsement of the strategic plan moving forward in order to provide a strategic approach to service delivery over the next five years. So in 1977, the Heritage House Museum was established by the town after purchasing the property from the Gleason family. Since that time, the museum has been managed and overseen by various arts department and museum staff, and has continued to remain an important community hub for history and cultural programs, services for our residents and visitors. In 2016, the Heritage House Museum underwent an internal service review under the Community Services Department. And over the last five years, staff have strived to meet those goals and outcomes, which include renewing and reviewing costs and operating services, adopting a business
a business model for programming that utilized grants and to offset funds, remove the barriers to period homes, allowing visitors to better interact with displays while also repurposing rooms to provide new and additional experiences that include an art gallery, new and changing collections, and an escape room, providing exceptional programming for families, school groups, and children, and utilizing and promoting the grounds as a visitor center as well as a community space. In 2022, the Heritage House Museum shifted to the economic development and tourism department in an effort to better align the community and tourism service delivery and marketing efforts within the corporation. Since that time, staff have been reviewing and assessing operations, building property deficiencies, programming, and financial capacity, while continuing to build upon offerings and experiences at the museum. Last year, council approved the addition of a full-time coordinator position from a part-time and additional operational funding to support increased costs of annual programming and service delivery at the museum. In order to plan for the future sustainability, the Heritage House Museum has drafted the strategic plan to guide the departmental work plans and museum operations over the next five years. The development of the strategic plan provided, was included an internal review as well as public consultations. We went out to the public and to stakeholders and the advisory board to figure out what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong, and to provide, and to identify six key priorities, which include create an inclusive and accessible community space, enhance community engagement, share relevant and meaningful stories, invest in marketing and communications, invest in capital projects, and strengthen museum financial planning. These key goals will be achieved through the 12 goals and 26 action items that are provided in the strategic plan. We also included a comprehensive review and itemized property maintenance lists, and we wanted council to understand what we need to do to continue to maintain the building and move forward and grow on what we have. So the options we provided to council is council will endorse the Smith Falls Heritage House Museum strategic plan. Council does not endorse the strategic plan and provide alternative direction. This plan was completed through the Trillium Resilient Communities Program, so it was completely funded by that, and we were able to leverage the cost of developing the plan, including a staff resource to do so. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Well, that's Counselor McGuire.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Siana and Julia, for bringing this tonight. It's such a great document. You know, the visitors are up, revenues are up, expenses are down. I really like how the survey was done. It's really good information, and I think the goals are solid. Definitely accessibility for me is a really important thing, that if we could improve that at the site, we could really open it up to, to a lot more people in the community. But I think, just like you read through these goals and, and the ideas to accomplish them, I'm really excited of what the next few years are going to look like. One thing I just want to be kind of careful of is that I know you guys have an extremely passionate team and some great volunteers over at the museum, and I just want to make sure that we don't take on too much so that passion becomes burnout, because I know from personal experience, you know, it's, it's easy to, it happens easily. So I think this is an ambitious plan, and as long as we take kind of realistic steps on it, I'm very supportive of when it comes budget time, because I'm sure there's going to be, that'll be the next side of it, so.
So just on that, too, like a lot of the things like the accessibility, which we, huge, big importance to us as well, like, we'll have to work in part with the town through their accessibility plan as well. So we, the plan says 2023 to 2027, but some of those bigger items will be things that we're going to try to accomplish what we can, but we also recognize the fact that we are a smaller team, and we have the great support of the town, too, so just what we can get started kind of in that time period, yeah.
So, great work. Congratulations.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. More a comment than anything else, a lot of work went into that. It's very well done, and I'm totally supportive of the strapline.
Thank you very much. Mayor Panko?
Sure. Thank you, and again, well done. 2016, the service review identified some of the challenges, and I think if I was sitting, if I knew them what I know today, what you've done, I would have been very proud of the work you've done, or I guess I am, recognizing. Exceeded my expectations, really. I think we look where we were. The numbers are all up, the expenses are down, the revenue, like, it's just a great story. Your, the list of the work needed is deeply concerning. We have no choice but to do it. So I think it's, it's understand the problem before you start working on it. Now we go for an early comprehensive look at it, and, and having been there Friday night, just it was the first time I've been through probably in about a year, and just how you have, you continue to change up the experience. And, and again, I know that's sort of response to the former service review, but it's taken that initiative to say, how are we going to continue to draw people in? So every time they're there, it's a new experience. So it's a great asset. It'll be our responsibility here to ensure you've got the funding to do what you need to do. So, I keep the fundraising going, too, though. Keep those pizzas going.
Absolutely. Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. Yes, this is a great report, and there is a lot of, well, was a lot of work put into that, and that's wonderful. And I do, I know you have a big idea of things to do and whatnot, reach out, because when people realize that there's things happening, they could come on board as volunteers and help you. I sit on the Railway Museum Board, and we have a lot of people that come and they help. And you might only have a couple hours a week, or maybe a couple hours a month, but you know what? That's a pair of hands that you can use. And having said all that and looking at it, it's all very positive, but when's the next pizza night? It was excellent.
Thank you, yeah. It was so much fun. We, I was just talking to Julia about how well it went, and like, great people, and that's definitely on the docket to be, to be an event.
So unique.
Yeah.
Very unique, and that's why you draw people there. Thank you.
Thank you both, and I think you have clear support around the horseshoe. I think my question might be more for Manager Crowder, but strategic plans are great, but operationalizing it is, is the secret ingredient. So I'm wondering if you've started, I noticed in the work plan, there's no departments listed. You haven't filled in the budget numbers yet. So what is the plan for making it actually happen?
That's really what we're looking for going forward. We really had to identify what the issues were first, and then be able to go out to vendors and get quotes in order to budget properly. So as part of this process, that's what we're doing, and part of the 2024 budget process, we can identify what those key things are, what needs to be done now this year, so we can present that to council for consideration. But with changing staff earlier this year, and, and the town corporately, we saw a bunch of changes in staffing and policies and procedures, and we have been able to advance some of the items already on the work plan. One of those is communications plan for the museum specifically. The other one is the, the town website. So there's an item there that says, develop a new town website, but we were able to incorporate that into our current town website to streamline things and save costs. So we've already kind of been working behind the scenes, and some of these priority items, because we had to defer this coming forward to council, are already starting to be worked on.
We look forward to the update, then. Thank you. Thank you both. Oh, I'm sorry, Ciano Morris?
Just, just to augment the, the maintenance issue, so this comes at a good time because we're, we're facing a significant milestone in the evolution of our asset management plan. Next July, we have a significant milestone. So the information collected here will feed into the asset management plan, and some of the items here may be more maintenance than, than large building envelope replacement issues that are typically considered capital versus operating, but equally important to embed in the 24 budget and going forward. So, so it certainly is timely to have this done, and it's a really good example of what we need to do with all of our facilities, all of our, our structures and facilities throughout town, which have to be in the new plan and submitted to the province by July 1st of next year. So there's a lot to do over the wintertime, and Heritage House has a head start.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, that's it for our priority items. Are there any committee, board, and external, and/or external organizational updates? Okay, seeing none. We have two items, of course, follows. The first is a letter and resolution from the municipality of Chatham, Kent. It is a suggestion that the clerk bring forward a report to council at an upcoming COW. Does council support that recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second piece is a media release about the committee plan for safety and well-being, and it is for us to review, and there will be a request coming forward for approval for the updated plan in the new year. So that's for our information tonight. Thank you. Okay, so we have no notice of motions, and I am looking for someone to move our adjournment. Counselor Robinson, seconded by Counselor Quinn, that the committee adjourn its proceedings at 6:01 PM, and stand so adjourned until the duly called, next duly-called committee meeting. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed? Who's opposed to adjournment?
What's that?
Who's opposed to adjournment?
I don't know. Just checking.
It never happens.
Might have been such a great meeting, everybody wanted to hang in.
I won't throw you this far. Great job. It was good chair, I think.
It's working now. It was the Wi-Fi. Remember you said you couldn't do the Wi-Fi? Did the Wi-Fi?
LG channel.
Son of a gun.
Yes. Great evening.
I see a picture of you riding.
Is it recorded, or?
I had our shift yesterday.
I don't think it will. It will be recorded.
I got probably six, seven hours left.
Okay, yeah, like, it's time. We'll share that once it's all completed.
It's better now.[1699.98]